Good morning. The September 24th, 2024 Board Meeting is now in order. I would like to welcome my fellow Board Members and the public. It's encouraging to see so many faces in the audience this morning. I would politely ask that you help our Board Meeting go a little more smoothly by following a few simple housekeeping rules. The public's opportunity to address the Board is during public comment portion of the meeting, so I would ask that you please refrain from speaking, loud disruptions, distractions, or other forms of communication that will hinder the business of the Board. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
At this time, the Board would like to hold a moment of silence, and we invite the audience to join. All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, at this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board Members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. Jenkins, would you like to go first?
Yes, I had the opportunity to join the Do It For Hunter Foundation at the U-Matter event at Merritt Island High School this weekend. And both Dr. Rendell and I had the pleasure of participating in the dunk tank. Mr. Raymer chickened out. Right, right, right. He gave his time to a student. And, you know, it may or may not have been because the water was a little bit of a questionable color, but it's okay. It was a good time. It was a good time had. It's a wonderful event. This event was even better than last year. There were so many people there. And honestly, one of the most positive moments was when I had arrived for my time slot. I actually had seen a couple of teachers who work in the south area leaving and going back to their cars. So it told me that, you know, our staff was supporting this event from all over the district, which is really incredible. Again, a really important message just to tell the people around you that you love them, that they're supported, and to understand that you may not understand everybody's story and their journey and what they're going through, and that if you feel like you're struggling, there is help out there. There are people there for you. 988 is the new hotline number. I am really, I said this last meeting because they were present, but Hunter's mom is an incredible inspiration, and I will never forget meeting her and her sharing her story with me because I can't even imagine what it feels like to lose a child who dies by suicide and then to turn around and turn it into positive advocacy. I have so much respect for that woman, and I just appreciate her inviting me to be a part of that moment and allowing all of us to be there to support her and her goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna hop down. We're gonna have Ms. Campbell speak last. Mr. Susan, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you to a couple of the schools that I visited. First off, Sable Elementary School. I was moving through the school and I had, it was really bizarre last week because I ran into a lot of the former students that I had that are now employees of the district. And there was one of my former students that was actually a teacher at Sable. And she was so excited to show me what she's been doing and talk about what we did in the past. And it was funny because when we were talking, one of the coordinators was there along with the principal, and she said, "Well, you understand what Mr. Susan did in his classroom? This was the fun stuff that we did." And she was going on and on and on, and I realized, I was like, "We may want to have some of those stories not make it all the way out because some of the things that we did was a lot of fun, but I don't know if they'd be respectful today." The other thing is, is that we had a student that was inside of there that, once we started talking about, he had heard that we were moving forward with our sports programs for the elementary schools. Many people don't know, but we just put soccer inside of the elementary school. And we also put flag football. And so this student had his cleats in his bag. And when we started talking about it, he thought that, for some reason, that today was gonna be the day that he was gonna run out onto the field. So he put them on, and he came out and he was wearing his cleats. And I said, "What are you doing in between class?" He goes, "I'm just getting ready for practice later on today." And I said, "No, man, it's for another couple of weeks." But I had asked him, I said, "Why are you so excited about it?" And this is the reason we did it, is that many of your low socioeconomic and single moms throughout the county are not able to pay for sports. And some of those children, because they don't have that opportunity, don't get the mentorships that they need. And with this program, not only will be able to have parents that can afford to have their kids, but some of the other programs that are gonna be in there, they'll be able to take advantage of. And it's a lot nicer for a family to be able to say, "Hey, instead of you coming home and then me running around trying to take you to practice from 5:30 to 7:00 and missing time with your family, that you can actually have practice during school, and then I get off work and I pick you up, and then our family can break bread together." It's a big opportunity for our elementary schools, big opportunity for our development. We're just really excited to bring it. Which brings me into the other part of the part was, is that we had a problem with not being able to fund some of the soccer balls and all the needs for the soccer, for the soccer program for elementary schools. And so all of a sudden, I ran into another one of my students, Alex Delhagen, and he manages all of the Walmart stores in Orlando. And I said, "Hey, Alex," I said, "I got a big ask." I said, remember how passionate I was about sports and everything else inside the classroom? He goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." I said, "I got a big ask, man." I said, "I need you to fund all of our soccer balls." So he agreed, and he's bringing 270 soccer balls today, along with a bunch of other stuff. But it was just funny because when you teach and you come back, I've been out of the classroom now for 10 years. And when I was in the classroom, Alex was in my class about 12, 13 years ago. You still see these kids as students of yours. You still see them as the kids that were inside your class. You still see them, you see them as being 16, 17, 18. And now they have families, and they've grown up, and you kind of see where some of the work that you and others have done inside the education system and gave them the hope as far as individuals carries them through. And the thank yous that you get are tremendous. So it was good because I've been out of the classroom for a long time, but it reminded me of some of the stuff that we did, had an impact on some of the things in the future. With that, I also went to Sherwood. I got myself in trouble in the kitchen. I stole some cookies. And there's a picture of me getting caught and yelled at. The unique thing about Sherwood that many people may not know is, is that she cooks for all of the staff members every day. And they're allowed to pay for it if they want, but she doesn't just cook some sort of meals. She goes out of her way. And the kitchen staff at Sherwood makes sure that our teachers have a special meal every day for a reduced cost, and that was phenomenal. I also wanted to say that I ran into the STEM teacher there, and she was doing some phenomenal things. And she's getting ready to take her kids up to Kennedy Space Center, so all around good at Sherwood. And then I did, we met with Art Holkey, Dr. Rendell and I, on Workforce. A big shout out to Knights Armament. Many people don't understand, it's a manufacturing center up in Titusville. And what he has done in 2008, when I was a teacher, again, bringing me back to when I was in education. Art and I developed some programs. One of them was called the STEAM Program, but we fed a direct pipe from kids from Space Coast High School to go to work at Knights Armament. And it has been a program that's been successful for many years. And now he's trying to expand it as his company went from having 15, 20 people to now having close to 4, 500. And so now he needs more children, so we're talking about how do we get the students from Titusville, Astronaut Coco, and everybody through the programs that we need. And that, to me, was a big deal. And Art being there, he's a driving force, so he's talking about bringing in Eastern Florida dual enrollments and good opportunities. And I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Rendell. There's been a lot of people that have come before Dr. Rendell's position, and these things hadn't gotten across the finish line. And when Dr. Rendell turned around and started talking, Art said, "I think we've got it here. I think we're gonna do something special for the majority of our kids." So I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Rendell, thank you to Art Holkey for coming and working with us with Knights Armament. And I could keep going all day. It was a special week last week. I just wanted to say thank you to my former students and the opportunities that they presented back to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mr. Trent?
I'll keep it short. It's been, it was a stressful week for many schools across the country, but in Brevard with some of the useless, you know, meaningless threats that they've received. I do want to have a special shout out for Cocoa Beach Junior-Senior High School, Principal Tim Powers, and the great job that him and his administration and staff had done when they evacuated Cocoa Beach Junior-Senior High School this past, this past week. I've heard from parents, I'm a parent myself, and staff on just how good of a job that they handled the situation with and the communication multiple times during the evacuation, how they took care of the kids. I mean, this is why we practice, and we have so many drills throughout the, throughout the year. And they just did a phenomenal job, so shout out to you guys. Keep it up. And I'm sure that would have been the exact same way at any school in our district, but this is why we do the things we do. And we get notifications all the time of all these drills because then when it really has to be done, it's pulled off like this. So great job, guys, and hopefully we don't have many more of those, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trent. I want to give a shout to Astronaut High. They held a college fair this past Monday where they had over 60 colleges come and participate. They made that available to the students in the north end of the county to come and really just kind of get a feel for different colleges and opportunities that are there for them. I'm gonna piggyback a little bit off of what you said, Mr. Trent. So every school, I think, in the, in the nation, I don't know, definitely in Florida, and Brevard County wasn't unique in this, experienced an influx of threats that were not viable threats, and thank God they're not viable threats. But I want to shout out to our district security because I know they have been running around and making sure that every one of these schools are safe, and that is not a small task to do with the amount of facilities we have, being 72 miles in length and the amount of students that we care for. So thank you so much for all that you guys have done. I know you've been burning the candle at both ends to make sure that everybody is safe as they possibly can be. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Want to also give a shout out to the Brevard Autism Coalition. This past Friday, they held a forum for candidates and really wanted to hear from people what, what their thoughts were on how we're gonna help our communities that have different abilities, disabilities. Autism was the main focus, but there were quite a wide variety of people in that room. I got the opportunity to go and listen and just hear from people and really walked away with feeling encouraged and feeling like this is an area that, that we need to do a better job as society on. Had the opportunity to meet with a really wonderful man, Ken. So if he ends up watching the school board meeting, Ken, I actually asked for his contact information today because he was phenomenal, and he's trying to find a job. And he's in this weird area of like, "I can't find a job anywhere," but he's got so many wonderful skills. And so I'm gonna connect him with a few people that I think maybe will help him. But thank you so much to Nicole Grabner for putting on that forum. It was very beneficial. Excited to see what comes about from that. Also gonna shamelessly plug this right now because Challenger 7, as you guys know, is our one and only year-round school. And guess what? They're on two-week intercession right now. Boy, wouldn't it be nice to have a two-week break right this moment? So gonna go ahead and plug that. Shout out to Challenger. I know that their teachers are very happy right now, and I've heard from so many schools all over the place, "Bring this here, bring this here, bring this here." So just want to go ahead and plug it again. It's a wonderful calendar. Keep looking for it as it comes forward. So, Dr. Rendell, do you have any?
Just wanted to make sure that everybody watching live knows that we are monitoring the weather system that is in the Caribbean, the Gulf. And if we need to make any announcements, we will make those tomorrow, Wednesday. It looks like the worst weather that we will experience is on Thursday. So if we're gonna do anything different Thursday, we will let everybody know Wednesday, as in tomorrow. If you're watching this a few weeks later, you'll know what happened, if we do anything. That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Campbell, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Dr. Rendell, do we have a time tomorrow that we're gonna make that decision by?
Thank you, yes, ma'am. We want to make our decision by noon tomorrow. So if we're gonna do anything different with Wednesday, if we're gonna cancel school or after-school activities or anything, if we're gonna do that, we'll notify everybody by noon tomorrow, noon Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Campbell, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. You have a special recognition today.
I do. And before I do that, I just wanted to share one other event that's actually ongoing this week. A few weeks ago, we got an email from Julie with the Brevard Cultural Alliance, sharing all the wonderful things that the funding that's come through Brevard Cultural Alliance has done with our art clubs. So on Saturday, same organization, Brevard Cultural Alliance, hosted Dr. Judy Bowers, who is a retired choral professor, education, music education professor from FSU. And she came down and they opened it up not only to all the choir teachers in our district, but also to some other districts. And actually, I heard that there were some teachers who don't teach choir, who came and really gleaned a lot of great information on just classroom structure and organization and technique strategies, things like that. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to them, because not only did she do the workshop on Saturday, she is, she has been yesterday, today, and then also tomorrow, going into several of our choir classrooms. And I think there was a, there was a "me, me, pick me" kind of volunteer opportunity for choir directors to have her come in and observe and give technique tips and help them work through some things and give lots of good feedback. And I got to do one of those yesterday. I'm gonna get to observe one tomorrow. So thank you to Brevard Cultural Alliance for making that happen. It was, I heard just great things. And for the little bit of time that I got to pop in on Saturday, it was really great. Lastly, I want, we're going to recognize a very special alumni, alumnus this morning, and that is U.S. Air Force Staff Sergeant Tristan Wright. Tristan was a 2015 graduate of Heritage High School. And while he was there, he participated in track, cross-country, and the sports medicine program. Tristan tragically died on August 15th while serving in an undisclosed location. He is the son of retired Sergeant Ricky Wright and Navolia Wright, who were here with us this morning. Mr. and Mrs. Wright and family, would you please stand so that we can honor you? Thank you. I want to tell you guys a little bit more about Staff Sergeant Wright. Tristan had been serving in the Air Force since 2016 and was assigned to the 27th Special Operations Logistics Readiness Squadron. During his career, he had deployed in support of Operation Resolute Support in the Afghan Theater, and most recently in support of Operation Inherent Resolve, which is in the Middle East. His commander, Major Brent Eske, said that he was the kind of supervisor who took the privilege of leading and mentoring airmen seriously. He cared deeply for the airmen in his flight and volunteered actively within the local community. His decorations include a U.S. Air and Space Force Commendation Medal, a U.S. Air Force Achievement Medal with two oak leaf clusters and C devices, an Air Force Good Conduct Medal with one oak leaf cluster, a Global War on Terrorism Medal, and a National Defense Service Medal. And he also served as a chaplain. My favorite quote was in, was from his mother in the Florida Today article. This is what Tristan told her, "I'm serving my country and giving my life so that you can live yours." So we very much appreciate your son's service. We thank you for giving him to us as a nation and as a community. We commend you, and I know that the last few weeks have been very difficult. And I know Heritage recognized him with a moment of silence at one of their football games a few weeks ago. And I know there's been special services. We wanted to recognize him as a special alumnus of Heritage High School and of Brevard Public Schools. And so thank you, thank you for your son's service and your brother's service, nephew's service, and also for your, your gift and sacrifice to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a short recess, if that's okay. I want to come down and give you guys a hug and thank you personally. We'll be back in five minutes. All right, thank you. All right, we are on to our next agenda item. I believe we have some other special guests that are in the room today. Mr. Susan, you have a group here today that you would like to recognize, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Yes, I want to say thank you for the ECAC Committee for accomplishing one of their goals. Many people may not know, but the ECAC Committee was formed to bring better citizenship to our students with both the support of military organizations, STEM opportunities, scholarships, and other opportunities that we have that are available that not many people take advantage of. So we formed the ECAC Committee over a breakfast, I think, napkin, where we were sitting down and we said, "This is something that we feel very strongly about with a lot of the turmoil that's going on and a lot of the direction that we see in some of our students, that we could use some help." And so the Dennises, Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Tammy, were the leading force behind getting it set up. And then from there, everybody knows who Don Weaver is. Mr. Don Weaver came on board. And then we had everybody else that slowly joined into the committee, and then we said we had some directions. The first one was, was what we all saw, which was the passport, which was very successful. We launched it. We have students that are coming in two weeks to get their certificates. And the other one that took a lot of work, and I will tell you that if anybody ever wants to get anything done, everybody always says to bring in the veterans. Well, it's not so much the veterans, it's usually the veterans' wives that are usually the ones that do all the work. And Ms. Tammy is responsible for all of the success that you see from a coordinating perspective, along with some of the organizations and individuals that we have inside of our audience. We developed a website that has some amazing opportunities, and I'm not gonna say a single word. And I just wanted to take a second and say, Ms. Tammy Dennis, thank you for your work as far as coordinating everybody's ideas and all the things that it took to make this happen and working with one of our salutatorians, Ms. Jessica Anderson, along with some others. So with that, if you'll come up and explain what you have created, along with everybody that's in here, thank you.
I am very happy to be part of this team, to meet so many amazing people and have them all come together. And our ECAC Launch Team is particularly excited to release this new website in partnership with Brevard Public Schools. Much work was done by our team and, of course, by people on the staff, including a vet here, especially at the end with the actual technical pieces that had to come together. Our heart is to provide opportunities for students all the way from kindergarten to career across Brevard. And that's truly where we're coming from, and we always come back to, is about the students. And as Matt mentioned, not long ago, we had a little brunch with him and brainstormed on how we could bring together veteran and civic organizations into a consortium, a coalition, to where the information could be put in one place so that people can actually find it and know about all the wonderful and amazing things that these organizations provide, and especially for students. And from there, we called or contacted Don Weaver. Now, I have to tell you that Don never ceases to amaze me, how many people he knows. But more importantly, how many people he helps. And his breadth of the veteran organizations and all of the things they do and bringing them together and motivating them as they help the veterans in our community and everyone around them is just amazing. And so I would like Don Weaver to stand, and I just want to give him a hand of applause. And you may stay standing because Don helped us.
You see how these meetings go, right? You can see it.
Yes, you got that. So Don helped us identify other organizations. And so representatives from those organizations came together and met monthly. And we call that the ECAC Launch Team. So if you're here and you were part of that monthly team or representing one of those organizations, please stand. Thank you. None of this could happen. So, the website. Brevard Education Civic and Funding Opportunities. Find and Finance Your Future. The key is in the find, right? That's the reason we're here, launching these resources. So helping students find the nugget or the nuggets that will help propel them into the future. Once we gathered all of the information, we divided everything that we found so far into six categories. Scholarships, and you can see them on the screen, military opportunities, contests and awards, activities and experiences, the museum passport program, and educator resources. And I actually want to start with educator resources. I'm just going to give you a couple examples from each one. The list is much longer, of course, but under educator resources, the Civil Air Patrol is probably one of the most amazing sources for teachers, and especially with STEM. So if you go on their site, you will find that they have STEM kits completely free. They are mechanics, renewable energy, robotics, rocketry, flight simulator, remote control aircraft, building bridges, you name it. I feel like it's on there. It was so exciting to me. And this is free to teachers. So they can access it. It includes curriculum. It includes the products you need to do the projects. It's just absolutely super amazing. And then the fun thing that they offer, at least I would think was fun, is free flights for teachers. So there's lots to look into, and I believe that is a good example of what's on there. Another thing that is under education resources is the Air and Space Force Association recognizes a Teacher of the Year. And it starts regionally and goes all the way to national. And you've heard the story before. Two years ago, one of our own teachers won that award. So please go on and check it out. Next, we have the activities and experiences. A different organization, the EAA, Experimental Aviation Association, offers free flights to kids. Now, how many kids wouldn't enjoy that? I would say probably a lot. I know I would have as a kid. And so that's a fun thing to check out. And then other things are like camps and, and design competitions. The Air Force and Space Association offers a cyber camp. And they also have Stellar Explorers Space Design. And there's many, many more. That's just two examples. If we move on to contests and awards, on there, you will find that the VFW offers a patriotism essay and speech contest, and also an art contest. So kids that like to jump in and compete and find something they're interested in, this is a good area for that. MOAC honors, and I'm going to read this because I don't want to miss it. MOAC honors superior students in the 20 Brevard County ROTC, Junior ROTC, Civil Air Patrol, Sea Cadets, and Sea Scout Programs. So Brevard is very supportive and has a lot, and we want to encourage all of those military opportunities. Another one I wanted to mention is Daughters of the American Revolution. They have a history essay contest. And I wanted to throw that out because different contests have different themes. And so, the learning opportunity varies across which opportunity your students would choose to participate in. Then we have military opportunities. We included all the service academies and links to join enlisted ranks in all of our services, Army, Air Force, Marines, Navy, and Coast Guard, and also the maritime academies. So you want to check all that out. We also included some military schools, like the Citadel and Virginia Military Institute. Then moving on to scholarships. Now, you probably know that, you know, that list is very long. And so I'm just going to give you a couple examples, but, and they also vary in what the scholarships are for. So for example, AFSIA gives scholarships that emphasizes science and STEM. The Propeller Club is for students interested in the maritime careers. Florida American Legion includes nursing, medical, and general studies. So there's lots of opportunities on there. Some of them are particular to military families, so dependent of, or that sort of thing, because part of this program is wanting to support military families within our Brevard community. But don't feel like, oh, Armed Forces is in the title. I don't have any military family. None of this applies to me. That is not true. Most of it, you don't have to be related to military families. There's absolutely something on this website for everybody. And this website is very dynamic. In that, I mean, as we learn more things, we will add to it, and especially local things. We're very interested in getting anything local in Brevard onto this website. We did include some national opportunities, but of course we want to let people know what's happening in Brevard. And that's why the program that already has been launched, the museum program with the passports, right, launched in June, many students already doing it and turning in that passport. If you get, for those of you who may not be familiar that are listening, 10 out of 17 of participating Brevard museums, they will get a certificate. And they will all be honored next month, October 8. So go see the museums and finish that up. And then we will continue to add local things to this website. So as we learn more, we'll add it so students can find what inspires, helps, and energizes them to thrive. Thank you for this opportunity to work with you and with our team to provide more things for our students.
Thank you, Tammy. I think, I think, I think one of the things as an educator and, and I'm sure the others that are on this panel understand this, is that we would hear about these opportunities like a week before they would come out. And what we wanted to do is be able to say, if you're a teacher and you want some of these opportunities, whether that's STEM materials, you know what I mean, any of that kind of stuff, scholarships, possibilities for your students, all of that stuff, we hear about it, but there's never a place that we can all go to get it all. And this was a monumental undertaking because when you try to contact all of the armed services for all their STEM opportunities, and these are some huge names, Air Forces, Navy, everybody, Sea Perch, like these, there's just some amazing opportunities in there. Now, it's all in one place. We wanted to create sustainable resources. So sustainable meaning that it's not somebody that just decided, we all know that when we came in to become STEM, when STEM became the big term out there, everybody, including like some of your local office furniture places, became STEM companies and stuff like that. And what we wanted to do is be able to provide resources to our STEM teachers that were sustainable. And that's what comes with some of these opportunities, in line with our curriculum and organize it all into one place. And you did that. And that's incredible. So I appreciate that. Is there a way we can go down and get a picture with all of them and have them come up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's go ahead and come on up.
Just for the reference, can you, can you say what the website is? Because it's not linked on the agenda, so we want to make sure that that is out there, what the actual ECAC website is.
It is under Brevard County Public Schools website, and it's called Brevard Education Civic and Funding Opportunities.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Just for the, because I just typed it in. It is B-E-C-F-O.org. So, B-E-C-F-O.org.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to make sure that that's linked on there.
I wrote that part down. I've just been clicking on it since they sent it to me.
Yeah. Just want to make sure it's out there because I anticipate people will go to that resource.
The plan moving forward, just so you know, is that now that it's been put together, the opportunity is, is that we're going to have our STEM teachers take a look at it. They're going to bring the organizations in, and they're going to meet with our STEM teachers to talk about the sustainable resources, and then also show them where these are at, along with push this out to the PTOs and stuff like that. So it'll get out there, but I appreciate that. But it's on our website. We wanted to be in line with the school district.
Okay, wonderful. Well, we'll take a, we'll take a quick recess and take a photo with you.
And Matt, could I just say real quick, if you do have any questions more specific, please feel free to contact me.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Tammy. You're welcome. All right. That will bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. On this morning's agenda, we have 22 consent items, two action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the following. We added A6, Education and Citizenship Armed Forces Coalition of Space Coast, or ECAC, which we just had. F18, Job Description Specialist-ESE Support. Revised were A8, Administrative Staff Recommendations, and F13, Instructional Staff Recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We are now at the administrative staff recommendations. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
All right. Dr. Rendell, I think we will be acknowledging these administrative staff recommendations at a future upcoming meeting, correct?
Correct. We will honor the people that we just promoted at a future staff meeting, but I do want to announce that Kelly Rouse has been promoted to the position of principal at Oak Park Elementary, and Margaret Thumming to the position of assistant principal at O'Gallie High School. But we will recognize them at an evening board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are now at the public comment portion of the meeting. We have how many public comments speakers today?
So far, four.
Four? All right. We have four speakers. Each will be allotted three minutes. In an effort to remain unbiased, Mr. Gibbs will be calling everyone to the podium. I would like to take this moment to remind everyone of the public comment rules as written out in Board Policy 0169.1. All comments should be directed at the board or individual board members. Staff members or other individuals shall not be addressed by name. Abusive, obscene, or irrelevant comments will not be permitted. Orderly conduct is expected from all public comment participants, and the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate the participant's public comment opportunity. Do we just get a couple more in?
Yeah, six.
Six. Okay, wonderful. Can you please call the first three up?
Anthony Calucci, Bernard Bryan, Diana Haynes.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. While I believe that this is a pro-teacher school board that works collaboratively to improve our working conditions, it's very clear that those you entrust to represent you in HR do not share the same values. Last week, the response by HR to several situations lacks integrity, common sense, and an ounce of empathy. For instance, we had one teacher have a cafeteria door slammed into her head by an out-of-control student as she was trying to open it on the other side. She followed workers' comp protocols and on that Tuesday was diagnosed with a concussion. She found herself not being able to make it to work Wednesday through Friday. On Friday, she went back to the doctor and was put out for Friday through Tuesday. Whatever convoluted rules exist for workers' comp prevented the doctor from retroactively putting her out for the previous Wednesday and Thursday. As this situation is clearly covered by her injury in the line of duty contract language, I told the teacher to ask her principal for the, for the two days per contract. The principal brought it to HR and they denied it. That's right, they denied injury pay to a teacher given a concussion by a student. Last year, you agreed to contract language that stated, "All members of the bargaining unit who are not entitled to preparation time shall be allowed office hours for up to 40 minutes per day." How in the world HR tells a principal that this only applies to those who are entitled to preparation time is beyond any logical explanation. Last week, I learned that no one bothered to tell the district recruiters about the MOU for the bonus at Endeavor that this board pushed for. Is this the kind of incompetence you want behind your name? I had an asthmatic teacher who felt she needed to leave a building that was over 85 degrees until the AC was fixed. When I requested the teacher not be charged sick time for a couple hours because our contract doesn't require them to work in hazardous working conditions, your HR wouldn't do this because the teacher didn't earn the pay. Let me ask a very pointed question here. Do you make sure all employees, even administrators, earn every penny they're paid? And last week, your HR folks tried to remove teacher pay to cover vacancies, claiming they don't have any money for this, even though the funding comes from the vacant position. HR once again took it on themselves to decide, ESE teachers working two jobs or teachers with very large classes don't deserve money for it. Is that the value you share? Is our budget really that tight that there's no wiggle room? HR is doing whatever it wants. They offered a 1% raise without your permission. Now, they're not abiding by our contract. They destroyed our grievance procedure. Your associate superintendent, who is supposed to be a neutral party at step three, is telling the principal what to do at step one, the director of labor relations what to do at step two. If you don't believe me, look at the email he sent you last week where he was clearly talking to a principal about a step one. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Bernard Bryan, Diana Haynes, Greg Ross.
Good morning. My name is Bernard Bryan, and I'm the educational chair of the South Brevard branch of NWCP, as well as a concerned citizen of South Brevard. First, you know, my reasons for coming up here for the last two years is to share my concerns about the reading and math gap among all demographics. And I just want to take this opportunity today to thank Dr. Rendell. We identified an issue about chronic absenteeism among Brevard Public Schools students. And I'm going to tell you, the report I just received from Dr. Rendell's team showed a tremendous improvement in that area. Because we, we understand that if a child is not in school, the child cannot learn. Those instructional times is so critical. That's why for the last two years, I've been looking at Fischborn diagram, you know, without getting emotional, what are the root causes. But I think this is significant root cause. And I want to just thank Dr. Rendell and his team. Thank you very much. And I, I see a good trend over the And I see a good trend over the last five weeks, so thank you so much. I also want to bring up, I'd like to thank Ms. Megan Wright. We brought up at our last meeting about the old schools, you know, what can we do to upgrade our school? And I want to tell you, we have a young man in this audience today, that young man right there, Mr. Joe McNeil, who stood up. He was one of the original Stone members, Stone High School members. So he's saying, "Mr. Bryan, we got to upgrade our Stone school." And I just want to thank this board for taking the time to listen. Because I've learned that there will be a workshop around capital expenditures. What can we do to improve our schools? Schools such as University Park, Delora, those schools need to be upgraded. And I'm not familiar with all schools across the district, but I'm telling you, that man, my boss, was an original member of Stone. And it's very sad to walk into that school, but I'm just so grateful for this team. Thank you for listening. And I want to shout out Mrs. Sue Hans. And I know she's going to do it right. She's a professional, and we trust her ability. And lastly, one of the areas that the community is concerned about is our VPK, early learning. You know, I'm going to continue to talk about that. But we need to have a robust plan in place so those students in marginalized communities can have 100% participation of students that needs to be attending VPK. That is a root cause. It will mitigate a lot of spending of trying to recover. So VPKNs, we definitely need a solid plan, and I'm confident we will see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Haynes, Greg Ross, Kelly Curvin.
Good morning. I just wanted to start off by saying that there is no greater loss in life than that of a child. You have to love these early morning school board meetings. What a great way to circumvent parental involvement. Let's schedule a school board meeting at 9:30 in the morning when the majority of parents in your system are at work. I think that's just brilliant. I'd like to go on to speak about something called decorum and respectability and decency. Some of these words might be foreign, but as school board members and alleged pillars of the community, I have a problem with the words and actions of your school board member to the point I believe he should be censured in some manner. I am a female. I am a mother. I'm a daughter. I have a daughter and a granddaughter, and I find it absolutely appalling that a school board member would refer to another school board member in a demeaning way about her comments or comments about her looks. But I also find it disgusting that she was called a whore. Mr. Susan, no matter what side of politics you are on, you represent the school board, the entity that educates our children. You publicly owe an apology to Jennifer Jenkins. You made these comments. It's well-known also that a state representative not only called her that word, but the C-word. Maybe that's the type of man you emulate. Maybe that's the type of man you want to be, but we're not going to accept it. The gentlemanly thing to do, the decent and moral thing to do, is to publicly apologize to Jennifer Jenkins. You owe her that. You owe the women that work for you that apology. You owe every mother, every daughter, and every female the apology to Jennifer Jenkins. I would also like to clear up something I haven't seen, not once, but twice. Mr. Susan, you have been referred to in public as the chairperson. Now, that may be a fantasy you want to entertain, but it's not reality or fact. As a matter of fact, at the Viera graduation, you were referred to as the chairperson, and also at a Breck meeting. Megan Wright, as far as I understand, you are our chairperson. And Mr. Susan, you should probably correct individuals when they say that to you. I'd now like to go on with what's been going on in our school system that brought me to the first statement. You're headed for a disaster. The community knows it, and they're concerned. All over social media, they've been talking about what's been going on from Titusville to Palm Bay in our school system. Gun threats, bomb threats, sexual assaults, vicious fights, assaults on not only student on student, but student on teachers. And I understand you're going to install a metal detector in one school. I can tell you, they don't work. And I would hope that you would look to other solutions, preferably dogs that can detect bombs and...
Oh, work. Oh, God. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Greg Ross, Kelly Curvin, Paul Raub.
Good morning, school board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. First thing I want to ask the board is if you could be proactive in protecting Haitian students. I haven't seen anything come from the board or the district based upon the hate I've seen in this country against Haitian students that's been displayed based on the last couple of news cycles. It'd be nice if you could maybe just speak about protecting both their mental and their physical health. Next, I want to speak about the proposed changes to policy 0169, public participation, specifically the part where you claim to be defining irrelevant comments. My question to you is, I don't see this in the policy. Who's going to determine what's an irrelevant comment? The board? The chair? How are you going to do it? Are you going to parse every paragraph? You're going to stop the public commenters and say, "That paragraph was irrelevant"? You're going to parse every sentence? "That sentence was irrelevant"? Are you going to stop them? You're going to parse every word? It's a silly thing to try to do. You can do better. Matt, I got a question for you. My question for you is, why are you using BPS staff on your campaign webpage? Well, we just heard the great presentation about ECAC, which I think is a great thing. I love the program. I love what the veterans have done. The name of the web developer was familiar to me, and I couldn't remember why, and then it hit me. Oh, right. That person's also doing your campaign work. So let's just be specific. You're using somebody who's working on your campaign to also develop a website in conjunction with the Brevard Public Schools that you're using to campaign on. Because that's what you did. You sat up here and campaigned from the dais for about 10 minutes. Everybody here heard it. Lastly, Dr. Rendell and Matt, I'm going to give you kind of a little hint of what your week to come is going to be. I have a question for you. Why are the students at Viera Middle School getting busing when you wouldn't provide busing to the elementary school students at Endeavor and Saturn Elementary? Is it because the kids at Viera Middle School are upper middle class? Is it because the Endeavor kids are underserved? Why? The middle school kids don't deserve busing by policy or by statute. We both know you didn't follow the statute. You didn't follow the policy. And we know you denied the busing to Endeavor and Saturn. The question I have is why? So be prepared. That's going to be the discussion this week. Do better. Thanks.
Kelly Curvin, Paul Raub.
Communication and transparency. There's often a short anecdote that I share when talking about these two things, and it's from Brene Brown's TED Talk where she describes what happened when people are left to come up to their own conclusions based only on their own assumptions, otherwise known as the story we tell ourselves. Now, why would I bring this up? We are less than two months into the new school year, and this board and Dr. Rendell has failed at both transparency and communication. I once thought my longstanding opinions on metal detectors were unpopular, but turns out they're not. There is decades' worth of data that prove metal detectors on school campuses do not improve safety nor curb school violence. The simple truth is, a metal detector can't detect intent, and until it can, it is security theater. As a nation, we have come to accept measures that give the illusion of safety without it actually making us safer. While I know I can't fight the inevitable, and this board is going to cite the TSA to which I'll remind you of the Red Team experiments, I will hold you accountable for your lack of transparency and communication in this decision-making process. At the meeting where metal detectors were discussed, it was understood that BPS would be testing them at games and special events. That changed June 25th at a principal's meeting, but the public was never told, not in an email, a social media announcement, or a follow-up meeting. This is problematic because many of the questions and concerns I have myself and that I've seen from the public could have and should have been addressed already. First, why is each school receiving three devices regardless of school population? It makes no sense that a school with nearly 2,300 students is receiving the same equipment as a school with less than 1,000 students. In fact, it sets the larger schools up to be less equitable and accessible because the processing speed of each student isn't dependent on the school's population. Therefore, students at larger schools are more likely to miss more class time than their peers at smaller schools. Students at larger population schools are more likely to experience more stress and therefore receive more discipline actions. Second, why aren't dedicated security personnel being hired to monitor these devices throughout the day? At what point does this board and superintendent recognize that the backs of our teachers are breaking with the additional non-teaching responsibilities saddled to them? Teachers just want to teach. Third, what is the district's plan for handing elevated rates of tardies and absences that are attributed to these devices? Despite your mission-accomplished banner about solving the busing issue, you haven't. Students continue to show up late every single day, and many of the routes that run late do so habitually. If you cannot get students to school on time, how do you expect to get students to the door on time? Fourth, in the event of a mass casualty event, how do you plan to keep students safe while they're waiting to get inside? Our policy for fire alarms was changed to keep students, teachers, and staff from becoming sitting ducks, and now you're making them sitting ducks. Fifth, are you working with local municipalities to address the changes in traffic patterns? Are you aware that car loops and bus loops are being changed and adjusted for these devices and what that will look like for traffic and arrival times? Instead of being dropped at the curb, I now have to drop my daughter in the middle of a parking lot and have her cross in front of buses to get to school. Is that actually the safest option? When you make decisions that fundamentally change the entire structure of our schools, it is your responsibility to communicate with transparency, and that didn't happen again. And since my daughter's school is the first guinea pig...
Thank you. I'll continue to hold you accountable.
Paul Raub.
So, last time I was here, I babbled for a while about the last couple of years of devolution of the book policy and committee and so forth in the county. And as Ferris Bueller said, life moves pretty fast. The committee's on hold again. Because the, I guess, the couple of members who sort of somewhat repeatedly, you know, we were supposed to have a meeting last week, but they belatedly said they weren't going to show up. We wouldn't have had a quorum. We didn't meet. That's happened before. Now they finally quit, but with one meeting to go on our schedule, the committee's been suspended because they've actually removed, you know... Historically, this will take some number of months to find replacements if we're following the past trends. Don't know why that is, especially Mr. Trent has kind of a revolving door seat. Seems like he should have a list ready. But I don't imagine anybody's going to hustle up on this since the guiding principles of all these changes seem to have been do nothing to make removal more difficult and do nothing that might speed up review. There's been promises to, "Well, we're looking at adding more committees." Never happened. You could have supported, you know, narrower, less legally dangerous guidance about, "Hey, really stick to the statutes. Maybe we can not toss quite as many books on the shelves. Maybe we'd still have books that are on the shelves even though they're read, you know, back to front." You could have done something to limit challenges by non-parents or people who, you know, don't even live in this district. Now, the state has now implemented a rule to kind of limit that, and I see in the new policy changes, you're going to follow that, you know, because you're bound to. But whereas you were happy to lead the state on things like, "Hey, there's been a challenge. Let's just go remove the book forever," I notice we're not happy to lead on anything that might make the situation better. It would be nice if, you know, the four books that are still waiting on the, you know, the four books that were currently scheduled to be challenged, maybe some of them could be back on the shelves. Two of them could have been back on the shelves at today's meeting if, you know, if the committee had met, if we'd voted, if we'd voted to keep, and if you'd actually respected our decision this time. But that's not going to happen. And, you know, for people who don't know, once those books have been formally challenged by somebody dropping in from anywhere in the universe, they are off the shelves of all the schools in the district indefinitely until such time as they pass the insurmountable hurdles of getting reviewed, getting approved, and then the board agreeing that, yes, this book is not actually going to jump off the shelves and harm anyone. It's embarrassing. It's just embarrassing and exhausting. Do better.
All right. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. There are 22 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Hearing none. I'm going to pull F31 for discussion. All right. I'll entertain a motion to...
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Paul, roll call.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to go back to F31, and so I'm just going to, I want to have a discussion about this because it's been several years now that we see this. It's a 400-page report that gets published annually, and it really goes through every one of our schools. I want to see every...
Need a motion in a second.
Sorry. Sorry. Do I hear a motion?
To approve.
All right. Discussion. Back into my discussion. You know, if you took the time to go through the 400-page report and look at what is on there and the citations, I would love our district to have the goal of clearing every single citation off of this list. I don't like to see the ones that are bound there for multiple years, and so I'm just saying that publicly. I would like the fire inspection report to come back clear, no citations or citations have been corrected, and that is where I'm leaving that one. All right. Any other discussion on it? No. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Rendell, will you please let us know about the items under the action portion of today?
Did Ms. Hand want to address the...
Oh, Ms. Hand was coming up here.
You're good?
No? Okay. Did you? Sorry, I didn't even see her move across the room. All right. Would you let us know about the items today under the action portion of the agenda?
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first action item is H33, Department and School Initiated Agreements.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right. And, Dr. Rendell, will you please let us know about the items? No, why is this on here twice? Sorry. I'm going through. The last action item.
There is one more. The last action item is H34, Procurement Solicitations.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No. Paul, roll call.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right. We're going to move on to the information agenda, which includes one item for the board to review, and it may be brought back for subsequent, at a subsequent meeting. No action is being taken on this item today. Does any board member wish to discuss the item? No? All right. We are now at board member reports. Does any board member have any further things to report or discuss?
I have some.
You have some?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Susan. All right.
So...
You got one too?
I was talking to Dr. Rendell, and I would like to try to make, you know, I can, he already said that it would be okay, but I wanted to kind of let you guys know, every time we ever talk about moving to 507 and giving an extra planning to our secondary schools, there's always a conversation about it, but there's never like a formal review. There's never a, "Here's what it would take for us to do it." They come back and they say, "Well, it'll cost us around this many millions of dollars. It'll cost us around this many people." But there's never been a formal like, "This is what it would look like to make sure that we move to it." Part of what we had said when Dr. Rendell came on, that this is one of the things that we would like to try to see if we can do. Now, we all know that this is a very big price tag along with a workforce issue, but I did ask Dr. Rendell if we could formally put that together just for an idea as we start moving to possibly trying to give our staff members and our teachers some more planning.[1721.23] So I just wanted to let you guys know about that, that he said it was okay to do, and they're going to take a look at it, but I didn't want you guys to hear about it and not understand where it came from. Anybody are good?
No, I'm good. This is a conversation that we've had before in the past, I think.
Ma'am chair, could I just ask for some clarification?
Absolutely.
This is something that's going to require some staff time and investment, so I'm looking for consensus from the board to move forward with a formal evaluation.
All right.
It's, I mean, it was under my, it was my understanding that we had this conversation previously, and we had a consensus of the board to move forward with just an idea of how much this would cost.
Yeah.
I feel like we already gave that permission.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of knowing how much it's going to cost the district. It's very appealing to a lot of our staff, so I would love to know, what does that look like, and is it even something that's able to be done?
If I could add to the request, because I think it would be fair to our elementary school teachers who not, who don't benefit from any of this conversation, for us as part of the report to just delineate the amount of planning time, secondary versus elementary in a typical week. I know they have shorter student days, so they get a little extra, but they also generally have more duty time. So if we can just kind of compare it side by side when we have that conversation, I think that would be helpful.
Funny you brought that up because that's the second point of discussion that I have. I just wanted to get the first one out. So thank you, Ms. Campbell. In my visits to the schools, I noticed both with the ESE department and some of the other areas that are IAs are starting to, that we could use some help filling some of those positions and possibly look at using some of the other positions that we have. So I spoke to Ms. Pam Danvier, and I said, hey, I said, talk to me about something that I came up with. So let me explain how this works. I was at O'Gally High School, and I was sitting in an ESE room, and all of a sudden the best buddy students came in. And one of them sat down, and the light that came off of that student was incredible because of the connection that that student had to him. And I said, I asked Mr. Vilgatz, my friend that I've been with for a long time, and he said, Matt, these children work very well with our students, and it would really help if we could utilize them and actually give them jobs, working with them, on-the-job training and stuff like that. So I talked to Dr. Rendell about it in our one-on-one, and I had asked him if we could formally look at, possibly looking at allowing 18-year-olds that are inside of our schools to start doing on-the-job training and filling some of those IA positions for two reasons. One, we need to fill the IA positions. But in some cases, the students are more inept to work with a student than they are with teachers and IAs currently. Now, what that does is, is it also in the high school area helps us with our ESE and some of our other areas. But in the elementary school, what it does, and this is part of what I asked Dr. Rendell to take a look at, is if we can have those individuals, some IAs that could fill some of those positions, go out and watch some of the students during planning, during their recess. Now, all of a sudden, instead of a teacher, an elementary school teacher having to walk the students out to recess, sit there out in recess, and then come back, then that time can be spent for planning, which is a double end on top of their normal planning that they would get. Now, we know that our elementary school teachers get about 30 minutes of planning. The problem is, is that by the time they walk the kids down, by the time they use the restroom, and then they come back, and then by the time they go back down there, it's basically like 10, 15 minutes. And we know that that's not good, but we know that there's also some opportunities. I've always wrestled with how to fit some more time for our elementary school teachers inside of that workspace. So what I did was I, part of the issue that I would like to look at is seeing if we can utilize our 18-year-olds that would be able to fill those job positions, both in the high school, coming down to elementary and middle school. And then also, we did it, when we talked about the IAs, we increased our bus driver pay by $5. If we're having trouble filling those IA positions, and they're so critical to where our teachers can utilize those as plannings, I'd like to look at possibly looking at raises for our IAs. So I made those requests to Dr. Rendell. I don't know if that requires a lot of staff work to check the OJT. I think that's something that Paul could take a look at. And then the IA raise would just be me working with HR to try to figure out what the cost is and bring it back. That's all.
Okay. Dr. Rendell, are you looking for direction again from the board on this one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, board, would you like to weigh in on the conversation?
Yeah. I like the thought of it. I don't support it. I don't know how many 18-year-old students we have that are in their senior year the whole time being 18-years-old, and if they are, traditionally, they're there for a reason. Also, just having an ESE background, having a master's degree in exceptional student education, I just believe if we feel like there's a deficit there, which I've been talking about for the past four years, then we should pay them better, offer them better wages, better working conditions, in order to ensure that we have exceptionally trained people working with our neediest students. That is the most important thing, not to discourage our students for participating and volunteering and being a part of that. Absolutely not. But these are our neediest students, and quite frankly, we need people who are experts in that area, who are passionate about that area, and who have been trained. And I don't even know the legality of even pulling that off.
All right, Ms. Campbell.
The program that comes to mind is our, and I'm not going to use the right term probably, oops.
These things are turning on and off.
Turned right back off. I may not use the right term, but we have a, it's not work release, that's prison. There's a program where our students go...
OJT.
On the job, yeah, thank you. Where they have a job out in the, it can be at a bowling alley, or at a restaurant, or at a manufacturing company or whatever, and some of, you know, depends, the age range depends on the workplace requirement, right? I think that that would be something, especially if it's by a semester, because we do have a lot of 18-year-olds when we get to the spring. I don't think that's our long-term solution, but I certainly wouldn't, you know, if it's legal and possible, and we can be one of the employers, we are doing that, we hire students in the summer for internships that we pay them for from different departments, and we have, we are paying students for tutoring through the RACE program. You know, certainly willing to have Paul and staff take a look. You know, the other conversations are bargaining conversations, which we're not going to have out in the public. You know, there's, there's always, you know, just lots of things that go into those conversations. But I think it would be worth, as far as seeing if we have the right students, if it's just a handful, if it's a half a dozen who are a perfect fit, let's give them the opportunity. So if it's legal and possible, feasible, I think that's, that's probably just as good of an opportunity. Honestly, I'd probably rather have them have those opportunities in a school somewhere than, you know, going to work at a fast food place because, you know, I know, I have a friend whose daughter was in that program, and she was all stressed because she had lost her job earlier in the year, and like, they had the deadline, they had to get the job by the beginning of the school year. And so if we have those opportunities that we can, we can offer, I'm good with that.
If I may, no way did I say that we want to fill every IA with the 18-year-olds. It was just an idea to help fill it. I did want to say that the individual that was one of, I met with the IAs that were currently in that room and asked them what they thought about it, and they said that it would be a spectacular idea to allow the students to be there. So I did, I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah. Here's my, here's my pushback is, you know, one, there's minimum requirements to become an IA. You have to have your AA, which very few of our 18-year-olds would have at the time. You either have to have an AA, or you have to go through the PARAPRO program. And so I don't think, I think probably where we might come down on something like this is not necessarily an IA, because we have a job description, and that you either have to go through the PARAPRO program, pass the test, or you have to have your AA and your certification that way. IAs cannot walk in off the street and get a job as an IA. They have to have, they have those minimum requirements. We might have something that's not an IA, but a special position, like we would say an IA intern or something like that. The other thing that comes to mind is that the IAs are sometimes used to fill minutes for certain, you know, with IEPs. I mean, so, and I don't know that an 18-year-old is going to be able to do that. Certainly the extra hands-on, and it seems like it's a really good match for our teaching academies as well, even though I don't think it would necessarily have to come from just those two schools to have the teaching academies. But just some cautions, and I add those in there, and I know you know they're in there, but I add those in there because I don't want anybody to watch this meeting or walk away from this meeting going, oh, my gosh, the school board, they're just going to throw 18-year-olds in the schools, and they think they're going to take care of, and some parent goes, not my kid, you're not having 18... We're not moving that fast. We're not moving that fast. We realize there are hurdles. Here are some of them that staff's going to have to figure out. But if we can find a way to get our students meaningful work that also meets a need, I'm for it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Trent?
Yeah, I believe our staff, when you get the thumbs up, they're going to look at everything. And, you know, as far as those 18-year-olds, I think they know when they're going to turn 18, so maybe the summer before when they're 17. If there's any somewhat training, they're good to go when they are 18. We'll find a spot for them. We may have to change a job description and put them into something else, but, you know, why turn away somebody that's, you know, can be in the workforce when we don't have to? So again, I have complete confidence in our staff. They're going to look through every possible avenue to make this a reality. They're just going to bring it back to us, and then we'll have these same discussions. So I look forward to what they have to say.
Yeah.
Good idea, Mr. Susan.
Thank you.
I'm going to weigh in too. I am, I'm in favor of this. The North End does something similar, where we have students that are going into classrooms and helping, and not necessarily in the role of an IA, but sort of doing a lot of the same, you know, it crosses over in some arenas. I think it's worth looking into. I think we, you know, at graduation, every year, we hear how many kids graduate with their associate's degree. If there is a way to have them secure employment already within our district here, and they've already identified that they love working with children, then by all means, let's find a path and a way to get them there. That way, they can stay local, stay here, and continue to invest in the community that they're part of. I think it's worth looking at. But the IA, so you're asking for a couple of things here. So you want to look at an IA raise, correct? Like what that looks like and how that's going, what that's going to cost the district?
Yep.
And then you're also looking at...
The legalities of having an 18-year-old fill a position.
Okay, all right. So that's why, like, there's a couple of different asks, so I just want to make sure I break them apart.
I know, I didn't get a chance to kind of...
Yeah. All right, I'm in favor of getting the information and finding out, what does this look like, and how much does this cost? Is this something feasible, and will this benefit our district? I think it's worth knowing that, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then I did want to tell you, if I may, to close it out, Lockheed Martin went two years to try to hire one of our 18-year-olds. Like Lockheed Martin was going to their higher-ups and saying, guys, we feel that some of the graduates that are coming out of O'Gally can do the work of some of our 20, 30-year-old stu, employees. And then finally, last year, the first one was hired, and she knocked it out of the park. And now they're hiring a lot of our students at 18-years-old. When I was a teacher at Space Coast High School, I was part of the founding team that started ATAPS, the teaching academy, and it was my students that would go across to Enterprise Elementary School and then teach with them and stuff like that. I see this as not only being an opportunity for our students to fill a position and connect with our kids, but also the pathway to become teachers. So thank you so much for your support. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jenkins, you said you had a couple of things you needed to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. And I know you're all aware of it, but I think it's my job and my responsibility to talk about it publicly because my questions haven't been addressed thus far. So before I begin, I'm going to, I don't have any interest of making a comment after this, regardless of what's said after I speak, but I'm going to refute the claims that are going to be made. So, no, I don't have one-on-one meetings with Dr. Rendell. I've been very honest about that and closed doors. And if you'd like me to be publicly, I have no problem doing so, but I don't think he would appreciate that. But I do have a district-paid cell phone. We all do. That, you know, rings when you call it. And so I have a serious problem with what went down recently. And the problem I have isn't what went down, it's how it was dealt with, how it was communicated, and how it was handled. Because the reality is, is if we discovered a problem, and we just notified the board about it, and we moved on, and we learned from this, I wouldn't have even blinked an eye at it. But that's not what happened. So recently, it was brought to my attention that we had accidentally spent either a quarter million or half a million, I don't, I haven't gotten confirmation of which one it is, on extra administrative pay in a supplement form. And I completely understand how this may have happened in terms of how we changed the way Title I schools are identified, because, fun fact, I learned about that as soon as I got on this board. And it's not complicated, but it is very different than the way that it was done when parents would fill out free and reduce lunch forms. What I'm not okay with is, the only reason I was made aware of it, was because I heard rumors about it. I had administrators speak to me about it, and then I questioned it. And the only reason any of you were made aware of it was because I questioned it. And when I was made aware of it, it apparently happened a week or two prior, and I'm not okay with that. Because the reality is, if it's a quarter million dollar mistake or a half a million dollar mistake, the board should have been made aware of it within 48 hours. We all have cell phones. And as far as I'm concerned, it's over the threshold of solutions for the approval of the superintendent by himself. And how it was handled after that was a disaster as well. It is my understanding that Dr. Rendell gave the instructions that these administrators can just keep the pay, but then we had HR calling administrators, telling them they had to give the money back, and now we have rumor mills in between administrators talking about who's getting to do what, which is a disaster. I do not appreciate the miscommunication, and quite frankly, I'm going to call it what it is, the lying to individual board members about what took place. Some board members were told that the reason that they got to keep the money was because Bassa was really upset. Well, Bassa didn't even know about it. So that's interesting. It's frustrating to me because when we talk about money and spending, Mr. Susan, do you have a question?
I'm speaking to our general counsel.
Would you like me to wait so you can hear what I'm saying?
Absolutely not. You go ahead.
Yes, I'm speaking. That's right, Mr. Gibbs, I'm speaking. Go ahead, I'll wait.
No.
I just want to make sure you hear everything.
I think I'm hearing you and I know where you're going.
Mr. Susan, you are the one who got up, so I will wait till you sit down.
I want to do some work.
Okay. So I have a problem with the lack of communication. I have a problem with the way it was handled. I have a problem with different board members being told different things, dramatically different things. I have a problem with our administrators being told different things. And I also have a problem with where the blame is trying to be placed, because quite frankly, I don't really care where the blame lies. I have a problem with the lack of communication and the lack of regard for the fact that it was either a quarter million or a half a million, and we don't know what pot it came out of. That is a lot of money for us to accidentally give to administrators. So here's the other thing, I'm going to refute before everyone starts talking. It was said, Ms. Jenkins is bringing this up because it's political. I don't know how it's political. Did we only pay Republicans? Did we only pay Democrats? Did we only pay independents?[1541.48] Did we only pay Republicans? Did we only pay Democrats? Do we only pay independents? I don't really understand that comment. The only thing political about it is the fact that this board chooses to ignore it, because I'm the one who brought it up. Much like the fact that I brought up firing our interim superintendent, a week after we hired him, and you guys waited months to do it. I can't even rationalize why none of you have a problem with this. Why we pull items off the agenda, saying $50,000 is a lot of money, and we don't have a problem with this. Someone should be held accountable for the lack of communication, and for, quite frankly, the miscommunication. It's inappropriate. And so my ask at the end of this, too, is, because a lot of things had come to light, I believe we need to audit our supplements that we're giving out. Because apparently, they're not all accurate. Some people are getting things they shouldn't get, or were getting them for too long, or at rates that they shouldn't be getting them at. It is our job as school board members to create policy, to implement it, to regulate, and adjust the budget, and to approve the budget. I don't know how much more clear that this exact problem is our job. How much more clear that can be. So, as you make excuses for it, I'm going to remind the public, no one on this dais knew about it until I inquired about it. Regardless of you saying, I don't have one-on-ones, you all had them. None of you knew about it, until I inquired about it. And that is a fact. A provable fact.
It's not true.
It is true.
It's not true.
Mr. Calucci, let's have a conversation afterwards, because you all admitted it to him. I don't lie. You can not like what I say, what I do, what I believe, but you will never catch me in a lie. It is a provable fact. None of you knew about it, until I brought it up. And you're covering it up, because you want to cover up the person who made the mistake. And the fact that I was told that this is because payroll looked to a column all the way to the right, is the most ridiculous excuse I have ever heard in my life. If we hand payroll, if our procedure is to hand payroll a complicated Title I form, and expect them to only look to the column to the right, well, man, we better come up with some better payroll procedures. That is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. And quite frankly, it is unfair to the person in payroll, because we all know it's not their fault. We all know that. And I asked these questions, I put these questions in writing, I asked them, I even asked for the records, because I wasn't getting any answers. It's crazy. It's crazy that we don't know where this money comes from, and it's crazy we don't know how long this mistake went on for. And it's also crazy and unrealistic to say that we were going to pull this money out of Milage to make up for the problem. Not okay. And I think that the public needs to know about it. I've got two more board meetings after this, and I'm not going to be quiet about this stuff. It's inappropriate. Do your jobs.
All right. Moving on, do you, I mean, we can either go back and forth here about this. I don't, I don't feel as though I need to explain my position on this, because I don't. Ms. Campbell, you had a couple of things that you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I'll just, very quickly, I'm not going to address all of that, because I have the date on when the issue was brought to me.
Yep.
And I can't tell you whether what you said was true or not, because I don't know when you found out, but I know when I found out.
Let's compare notes.
And, but I will say this. I think we've had conversations about supplements before. I think BFTs have conversations about supplements. I think we've talked about it. It probably would be a good idea, if we don't already have it in practice, to let's just go through. And I think that was something we've had conversations about, if not in the last year, in the last two years. So I think it's probably a good idea for staff to, let's just clean up some roles. So that I can absolutely support. I just wanted to share with you, since we haven't had a meeting in a few weeks, two things. One, thank you all for allowing me to go to Washington DC for the COSPA event a few weeks ago. It was very fruitful. We actually, the Florida team actually met with every single, either the representative, or their staffer, of all the Florida delegation, including the senators' offices, except for one. And so I think that's a pretty good, a pretty good visit by the Florida team. Because we have a large delegation, Florida does, it actually took us a couple of days to get all those meetings set up. And we had three teams going, running all over the Capitol, back and forth from building to building, to make sure we got into. But we had really great conversations with them, especially around cybersecurity. And the FCC is doing some new things to really try to support. There was a specific bill we got to ask them to support, that was trying to expand cybersecurity offerings specifically for the K-12 space. And we really just made them aware, a lot of our congressmen and senators weren't aware of the huge threats that we received, that Brevard specifically has received in the past. And the idea of, you know, just the amount of sensitive information that we need, and so it really needs to be protected. And so those were good conversations. We also had good conversations about the National School Lunch Program. And you guys may be, may or may not be aware that IDEA has not been fully funded. And fully funded, it's not 100% fully funded, from the federal government is 40%. It hasn't been 40% ever. So we, you know, always ask, hey, can we, can we get a little more with our IDA funding? Because it's up to the state and the district to, to fill in those gaps. And then we had, because the House budget proposal had just come out, and we were, we've been told, this is not the way it's going to end up, which is what, because it's passed across the table first. The House proposal in particular had cut all Title II funding. All of it. And so, again, we were reassured by people, this is not where we're going to end up. But one of the conversations that we had again and again and again, with our congressmen, with their staffers, with our senator's staff, is that Title II funding is especially important today, because of our efforts around the science of reading. Because the science of reading is such a, I won't say it's new, because some of it is part of the pendulum swing that happens in education, but most of our teachers were not trained in those methods. And so we're doing such good, important work, retraining teachers in this, in these, according to this body of research, Title II funding is more important than ever before, on top of the fact that we have so many teachers coming from outside of education, didn't, you know, didn't study education in college. And so we're kind of doing on-the-job training. And so we use a lot of those Title II dollars to, to support our teachers who have come from other fields, including CTE. And so we, those are really good conversations. It was very much received well. And so I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to go up there. It was super fun. I promise we didn't just do a bunch of sight reading, even though I did get to go on the very last day, the last hour, to the Library of Congress. It was amazing. The other thing I wanted to share with you is that for all of our district employees and board, I'm going to challenge you as well, even though I'm not sure if you're ready to have a team again. But the Walktober Challenge, thank you. You got an email about it. Go online and sign up for Walktober. There's an app, and if you get your, I think it's like 6,000 steps a day, you get a leaf on your tree, and there are, there is a team page. I won't create a team unless, I've got, you know, at least a good handful buying from us, and maybe we can join with GCR or something. But, another small team. Yeah, as long as we have Paul, we're, we're.
If somebody abduct Paul.
But you guys go on. The signup is going on from now through October 11th. The actual walking time starts October 1st, and goes through November the 11th. So we can, should all be able to participate in that. And it does have a way to track automatically with your device, if you have a device that's keeping up with your steps. You can sync it, and that way you don't have to remember to go online and put in your information. So, but I encourage everybody to go to that. And also, all of our employees, I very much appreciate the benefits department and our partners over there, who encourage us to get healthy, stay healthy, because a healthy workforce is a more effective workforce. So, board, let's lead by example. Get your shoes on, and sign up for Walktober.
I, I would like to know, Paul, how do you do yours? Like, because...
We decided last year, he puts it on the dog.
I know he does. I know he does. That's why I'm trying to catch him, so I can film this whole thing now. This is a whole deal.
Got to watch.
Do you have it attached to your watch? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
And then you attach it to your animals, is what it is? Or your kids, they run around? I get it. All right. I got five kids, so it's going to be interesting.
My kids would not get me any steps, I promise.
All right. Mr. Trent, did you have anything to report? No? All right. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything further to report?
I do not.
All right. Being that there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.